Okay, I think it is actually time for us to start our meeting. So I would like to call us to order for this study session of April 7th, 2020 of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners. Our first item of business is to deal with remote attendance because we are doing this in a way that is contrary to our established board policy. However, it is our understanding that we can do this with regards to the governor's emergency declaration. And so I would ask if there is any commissioner willing to make the suggested motion to move to temporarily suspend our remote attendance policy.
I moved to temporarily suspend our remote attendance policy.
Second, Meredith, I wish I were where you are.
Okay, that's been, that's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, we should hold a roll call vote on this. So normally we have directions to go by. Can't do that so much. So I will call you, I will call the roll and, and please respond after I did call your name. So Roger Diggs.
Aye.
LaShonda Cunningham.
Aye.
Meredith Blumenthal.
Aye.
Nancy Del Coleman.
Aye.
And I also.
Aye, aye.
So, so that has carried unanimously. And we move on to our next item of business, which is to accept the agenda as presented, I presume, tonight?
I know we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if any opposed? Hearing none, we have an agenda for the evening. Next item is public comment. Has there any indication of anyone from the public? Either having emailed in comment or joined the meeting wishing to make comments?
I don't believe there's any members of the public in the room, but I will just say that if there is, anybody really would like to speak up, if you're not able to unmute yourself, you can go to the participants screen and you can click their raise your hand button. Also for those phoning in, which there aren't anybody, you can dial star nine. That will raise your hand to draw attention to yourself, or you can just wave wildly until we see you and, and we'll make sure that you're able to give comment. But like I said, there's nobody in the room that we weren't expecting at this point. So I don't believe there's any members of the public in attendance.
Michael, I have not received any emails either. I bet Mike at the office at the cottage in the event somebody would email a question. I have not received any yet.
Okay. Well, then I think we're ready to move on to our first discussion item, which is the organic garden program focus groups and action plan.
Staff Scott, our consultant, our gentleman here, he's gonna do an update and then we have an action plan and staff report to follow.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Nancy, I'm with you. I can't decide if I'd rather be in Michael's scene right now or with Meredith each.
I think I'm taking Meredith.
The other day Corky had.
You can get to mine faster.
I was trying to, trying to run like the flag from Corky's scene yesterday. He had San Francisco up, so.
Oh yeah, Michael too. Yeah. Oh, I don't think I want to go there.
Yeah.
Too many people.
Well, first I want to say thank you so much for being willing and able to meet over the interwebs and, and talk through my findings from doing some focus groups related to the organic gardens. If you give me a second here, I'll bring up presentation. And I want to let you all know that I've been doing a number of different Zoom chats and sometimes it switches for me between gallery view and also just seeing a few of the participants. So feel free to speak up. Don't be afraid to ask questions throughout. We can pick up where we left off, not a big deal. So please do feel free to do that. And if someone is muted and has a question or other questions come in, please somebody just reach out, let me know to stop and I'll be happy to answer those questions at any time as well. All right, let me get the figure out a share here.
An important skill.
Yep. All right. Get the slideshow up and running. Okay, so first, even though some of the participants, those who participated in the focus groups are not with us tonight. I have many thank yous. There's a lot of people that showed up and were willing to spend a lot of time sharing information, engage with me after the focus groups. Really thoughtful things to share that they thought weeks after the focus groups that they thought to reach out to me by email. And Chelsea and Judy and all their staff. And also the gardeners shared a number of the photographs that you'll see this evening. Yeah, it really was a team effort and the gardeners were, as you will tell, are very invested in this program and shared a lot of information. So I just wanted to start off with that blanket thank you to everyone that participated and was helpful throughout the process. So as you know, in the past, I engaged with the park district as you were finalizing your strategic plan. You had done a long, long-term investment in public engagement in order to figure out and confirm the pillars of your plan. And at the end of that, there was just some additional questions that your staff had had that we wanted to do a deeper dive into the pillars. We had 50 people that came to those presentations, eight focus groups and resoundingly, at the end of each one of them, they said, this is great. We'd love to have some more conversations. We'd love to be involved. And park district staff thought as you all had had some other individuals come to your board meetings and also speak up in other ways related to the aquatics program and the organic gardening program that maybe this would be a good method to let those people have a voice related to these legacy programs. What was apparent from the beginning was, was two things. One, as far as the organic gardeners go, they, I would describe them as being interested in serious leisure. Stevens was the person that coined this term back in the, in the early nineties. And it talks about how leisure, that leisure activity brings them deep self fulfillment. They utilize special skills. They have unique knowledge and experiences and they come to the table with a real earnestness, sincerity, importantness and careful thought related to their specific leisure activity when they participate and when they think about it. And that was definitely apparent throughout the focus groups and interviews we had with gardeners. They are very invested in this program. Second, I would say, I'll get into this later, but they're also very concerned about the growing conditions at the sites. And they came with that on their mind as well. So we had two different sites that we had to be concerned about. As you know, Victory Park has individuals that have, that participate in organic gardening and also at Meadowbrook Park. So originally we thought we'd have a number of focus groups, but we came back and decided since the sample was so small at Victory Park, we had reached out to those individuals and offer them the opportunity to have an individual interview. And the Victory Park users just jumped at the chance from the start, from the get-go. Individuals at Meadowbrook Park were a little bit more slow or were slower to signify that they were going to participate. And Kara, Kara Dudik and Derek Liebert and myself had a phone conversation about this. And one of the thoughts that they had had was, well, for the strategic plan focus groups, we offered a Meyer food store gift card. And in this case, we were offering park district programming gift cards. So we thought, well, what if we switch? What if we send out a note to the registered users of the organic gardens? And put that opportunity out there again for them that it would be a Meyer gift card and sweeten the pot with a water bottle that's branded with the Urbana Park District brand and see what happens. And shortly thereafter, we filled one focus group and had another focus group set up. So overall, between the two gardens, we had 18 participants, which is very close to 20% of the people that were registered as gardeners that came out and spent some time with us and shared some information that you're going to hear in a moment. Here's just a small little breakdown of who participated. We didn't get quite as good of participation in the actual signup genius link that we sent out. We asked some specific questions related to race and ethnicity and less of them chose to respond. Just from my own visual observation, inferences that I would draw, I would say the group was a lot more diverse than represented here. But again, I won't speak to that necessarily because I can't, can't say that that's really the case just from observation. One thing that you can note is that for the strategic plan, our median age was roughly in the high thirties. For the pools, it was roughly in the forties. And as you can see, the median age of participants for the gardens was 58 and a half. So we have an older demographic, at least that participated in this, that was part, using your organic gardens. Let's see, what else can I tell you from this slide? I think that's all that I had for this one to share with you. So we'll go on to the next one unless you have any other questions. Oh yeah, before I go on, almost every user at the organic gardens participated in an interview. And it was four out of five. And then we had 14 participants in two focus groups for Meadowbrook as well. So since we have two locations, as I share the results with you, I'm going to group the results where appropriate and where I see them diverging and being slightly different, I will tell you this was the Victory Park participants only, or this was the Meadowbrook Park participants only that said these specific things or had these specific needs.
She had deer patrol?
Was that a question? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Just making a joke. She had, when her hose was running, it looked like she was maybe trying to keep the deer out.
That's, that's possible. I think they would use any method to deter.
Sharp sticks.
Yeah. One of the real formative quotes that I was able to pull from the transcripts was "A place to receive visitors, a chance to share." That was really what I felt like resounded with a lot of the participants in the focus groups. It felt like this was a natural community center for them in some ways. What was really evident was your participants loved gardening. They want the Urbana Park District to love gardening as much as they do. And they also want others in the community to love gardening, especially organic gardening as much as they do. Even though they came to the table and had some specific issues and concerns, the, the conversation was very congenial and friendly. And there was lots of points where people would say, you know, I had a real problem with this. But the gardeners knew specifically which, which plot was theirs. And they would compliment them and say, but you tried this and you did this. So it was a real sense of community that had developed in both garden settings. They are constantly focused on learning being important to them, health and community were the three major themes of importance. What they get out of gardening beyond some of the ones I'm going to share here in a minute. So we started by asking them, we wanted to know what's their motivations? And what services do they value related to the organic gardens? And a number of them came to the table and said, you know, we've looked around and we noticed that the number of renters has declined. And they started off by saying, we showed up because we're afraid that the program was going to close. There was, that was a genuine fear that they had. So we moved on to ask them, well, why do you use it? Why do you see a decline in the program? In your opinions, how is this going to affect the park district and how they move forward and motivate people? Because you obviously want people to participate and be part of organic gardening and enjoy it as much as you do. So what are their values and motivations? And when it came down to it, I felt the themes related to access, that their yards are very shady. There's a spiritual aspect to gardening. And they want to know what their food they're eating, where it has come from. And these quotes kind of sum up those, those conversations very well. First one, and in Urbana, the tree city, there's just not much sun. One person said, the park is really a pleasant place to maintain communal interaction and private endeavor. I receive good energy for the body and soul. It's so important for people to grow their own food. I'm baffled how disconnected we are from our food source. Food is practically free if you grow it yourselves. So services that were perceived to foster ease of access were also prioritized by the organic garden users. There was one individual in particular that said it was very important for them to be able to use their electric assisted wheelchair and be able to roll to Victory Park to garden. They had had some issues where they had tried to take public transport to Meadowbrook and garden there, but public transport had told them their door-to-door service would no longer do it because of the parking lot. There's also conversations around how at Victory Park, the raised beds are important for older adults to be able to garden in a setting that they normally wouldn't if they were on the ground. They also mentioned as well, at Victory Park, that Grossback Road is important to them to be able to have a parking space. So that they're able to take out their tools, pick up their vegetables at times. Those type of different things. Access at Meadowbrook meant two things. Number of them had small garages or had apartment dwellings and they weren't able to store their tools and they felt like they weren't able to afford some of them. Whether it be a tiller or other tools that might not be readily available to them. So ease of access to them meant, can we have some kind of tool share program or a place where we can store our tools? Number of the older individuals also talked about how important fencing is in that setting and that they need to do everything they can in order to keep deer out of their garden plots. But for some of the older adults, it was very difficult for them to set up the fencing. So they had conversations around, well, is it possible to have a uniform fencing system? And training and help even with putting up a fence around the plots that we choose? So next question we asked, why would others be less likely to take advantage of the organic gardening program? Really, in general, when I asked this question, it was like you could hear a pin drop. There was silence, there was head shakes. And in general, I think they almost didn't want to point the finger to draw people with they didn't want to draw attention to what they felt were the real issues in society or at the garden. But like I said, a number of them had come to the focus groups because they were afraid it was going to close. So as I listened and made some inferences, I think these might be some conclusions we could possibly draw as to why others aren't taking advantage of the program in their opinion. One person said, I wish we could encourage more gardeners to garden, but I'm retired, so I have more time and it does take a lot of time. But I also had a garden there when I worked too. So it's what your priorities are, I guess. Another individual said, for what we've invested, we'd be better off in a CSA, Community Supported Agriculture Program. Another person said, you know, there's a real change in culture that's going on. People are too busy playing video games. So lack of time, more interest in other leisure activities. All of them talked about there's a lot of work that they invest in making their organic garden go and grow. And they also spend a lot of money, a lot of money in their opinion, on keeping the deer out, on working against the bugs that are eating their plants and invasives like mugwort. Not to mention, they're concerned about the soil conditions as well. So next we touched on with them, what's your perceived investment in the gardens and also in the staff who work and care for the gardens as well? We have to remember that many of the individuals that came are longtime users with historic memories. They have decades of use at Meadowbrook's organic garden program. So to them, many of them said, you know, early on, we felt like it was much more a focus of the park district. You know, I don't, and I skipped down a little bit, but I, I don't really know how that would increase or what? How that would relate to the vacancy or the people not coming out for it or not, but definitely it has not been a focus. What they talked about consistently was they were looking for an internal advocate for the program. They wanted someone who was knowledgeable about organic gardening that could help them with their issues and concerns. And someone that was available, an Urbana Park District staff person who's available when they needed it.
And these are the long-term gardeners that were saying that, Jared?
Yes.
Huh.
Here we come to the crux of the conversation. Excuse me, the things that I shared with you probably took up a third of the time. Two thirds of the conversation was centered around what I would call the growing conditions at both gardens. One person said, we definitely noticed, especially with the tomatoes and some other stuff, fertility going down the last couple of years without the manure. Another individual said, but the most critical thing is the soil. It's not rich in organic matter. It has some nutrients definitely, but the more the organic matter is, the better the farm. People like us would be encouraged to farm every year. That's my point. So in one focus group, we had this interesting dichotomy where some of the people were really focused and concerned about the organic manure being provided. Other people were very concerned about the organic matter in the soil and how that maybe has, has declined. But the individual who was on the side of the organic matter is a PhD candidate at U of I and he has an interesting story. He's a scholar from Nepal. He was the head of the Department of Agriculture in the country of Nepal. And when he was looking for a PhD program in the US, he said, he came to the U of I and he came to Urbana because there was an organic gardening program publicly available that he could use.
Oh geez.
He had found it online when he was doing his searching for his PhD program. So that's really a great and interesting story that he shared. And he also, I think, carried a lot of weight in the conversation by saying, you know, it's not just your perceptions about the manure at the site, but it's also important, we care about the organic material that is in the composition of the soil that's there.
And Jared, did they talk about, are their perceptions based on like, they felt the yield harvest was, you know, the yields were down or their harvest was down, or they talk about specifics at all?
Yeah, in general, the longtime users had felt like, you know, they would exaggerate like fishermen, so to speak, but they would say, I'd come home and my entire table would be covered with vegetables. I would have piles and piles and you should see my pictures of it. And then now I, you know, three, four, five years ago, I used to get six tomatoes on one plant and now I get one. So that was kind of the conversations that they would have at the table related to the fertility. I think that was their, their key concern. I would also say too, they were, there was conversation related to the growing conditions that centered around drainage. There were some sites that they felt specifically just didn't drain well. And then a number of them have modified what they grow because of deer population and the deer coming into their different plots. So they were, they were bemoaning the fact that they couldn't grow certain plants anymore because the deer had been mowing them down and stealing their, their, their fruits and vegetables. Major concern related.
I'm sorry. And they're talking about four-legged deer as opposed to two-legged deer.
Well.
Context.
Was there a lot of comment? Because I've heard that, I've heard a lot of people unhappy because there were so many two-legged.
Yes, there was, there was conversations around theft as well. There was one individual who even went as far as locking her fences and her locks were cut in order for people to steal her eggplants. And the general conversation after that, after they were talking about that was we are a community that shares and people don't have to steal from us. We'd be happily give to whoever needs or whoever wants something that we have in our garden, just don't take from us kind of thing is what they were saying. LaShonda. Yeah.
LaShonda was raising her hand. I don't know if she has a comment.
Thank you, Katie.
Well, I had a comment about the, the drainage. So as far as the drainage not draining, is that tied to any of the drainage district as far as drainage commissioners? Or is that fall between the park district and, or just solely the park district, if that makes sense? Commissioner. So I'm just curious if, you know, if there's a commissioner within the area that oversees part of the, how it's draining back there?
I wouldn't perceive that to be the problem, LaShonda. I think that what happens is that as it, as people garden, the, the soil tends to, for some reason, get kind of moved to the perimeter. So they're making themselves more of a well in each of the plots. So it's not completely level when they start out. And then if we've, and we've had several really rainy springs. So it's going, the water is going to collect in there. And if they're not very savvy gardeners, which it sounds to me like a lot of them aren't, even though they've been there for a long time, they're, they're not going to realize what they're doing to themselves. Does that, does that sound right, Judy? I, I saw Judy on here someplace.
I'm going to jump in as well. And we'll get into a little bit of this in the action plan, but there's a natural, a lot of natural variability and, and the grade on the site. So there's some plots that just collect more water than other plots, other plots that are quite dry. But aside from that, what we've seen over the years, and this gets back to the organic matter question and was also reflected in the soil testing that we did is that we have from years of extractive gardening, the gardens have become more dished out and, and bowl-like. And so the water doesn't have anywhere to go other than, than down. There's, there's less sheet flow off the side. So by building up the soil profile with adding organic matter, we can restore better drainage.
Historically, the east end of the gardens, so the garden, the area farthest from Race Street was always typically wetter. And that is where the perennial gardens were put with the thinking that if they're perennial gardeners, they would augment their profile of their soil by building it up or adding to it throughout the time. And I know some of the perennial gardeners were there. Also, Tim could probably remind me of this, when we put the, we, we did put a drain in on the south side of the gardens to try to cause water to move away from the gardens. But Derek's right. I mean, after 40 years, there's not going to be the same soil that there was there 40 years ago.
That's right, Judy. I think the other point too is the site was never really professionally graded or laid out necessarily to, you know, really enhance garden drainage. Essentially it was a relatively flat, rolling sort of area of the park that was transitioned into the gardens. When we did the trail work, we did create some swales to help try to drain that side of the garden. But Derek's correct. I think probably the bigger impact is the wallow outs and probably the continual use of the grass walkways in between the gardens, you know, compacting when rain comes. That's where the rain tends to gather.
And theft, do we think that theft is from other gardeners in the area? Because Steph, I mean, it's happening everywhere. So can we really say that it's other gardeners that are getting in there?
Theft is, is always been an issue and it comes and goes and the severity of it. And there are signs that we do put out that inform the public that this is a program where people are gardening for themselves. What concerns me more is that we're not getting reports of theft. We can't really do anything after the season is over. After the fact, we do ask the gardeners to call the police if they see somebody that they don't think is the, we, we really want them to be a community and know who's in the gardens. And I know up until when I moved out, the number of people that came, because when I would, when we had, when I was in charge of the garden program, I would tell them to come up to the house and tell me if there was a problem. And that decreased a lot over the last couple of years. So it's, it's hard for us to know what is actually happening if we're not getting reports for it. So it's, it's hard for us to know what is actually happening if we're not getting reports for it.
Yeah, I think in general, it's probably not other gardeners. I think it's just people out at the park.
Sorry.
That's great, don't be sorry.
Okay, so the next thing we wanted to find out from them was, would workshops, would education enhance the value of the organic garden program for the participants? And initially, many said, you know, we really want to educate the newer users. Because if they leave, their garden plots end up looking like what you see on the screen. And all that stuff ends up spreading to the rest of the gardens. So the spread of invasives is a big concern to them, or weeds in general, as it relates to education. But in general, most attendees were not sure if they would take the, take the time to participate in programs or events. They spend a lot of time at the garden and gardening and don't know if they have any additional time that they'd be willing to share with the programs. However, they did say, you know, what is good for us is good for anyone in the community. So you may capture a small portion of them, but they see it as being broadly important that organic gardening and practices and good practices for gardening that are shared and people can be educated on them were very important for them. They want this to move throughout the community. A number of them also said, at least at the table, that they'd be interested in volunteering or advising or, or getting involved more if they were asked to do it. So I think there is some interest in that out there. But I would also preface with the point that most of them said, no, we think there's a lot of great education opportunities that the park district does, but we spend all of our time gardening. So that's where they were looking.
I, I know, I know how to do this. And I know, and I know, and I'm going to tell you how to do it. Because I already know, but it, it, it seems to me pretty obvious that a lot of these folks don't know how to do it if they've been gardening there for a long time and their soil fertility has gone down that much. It's, it's not that, it's not that hard to figure out and it's not that hard to remedy. I mean, I, I, I'm not particularly sympathetic with these folks, to be blunt. So anyway, sorry for interrupting.
No, no interruption at all. Some areas they were, they were very concerned about especially was deer and mugwort. We already touched on theft being a concern for them. Another individual talked about at Victory Park, how their carrots were just about ready to be ripe. And they felt like someone had just come and sat down on their raised bed and had a phone call conversation and just pulled every single one of their carrots up and just left them sitting there. So there's some of those common things that they felt like were happening. So in general, outside of the growing conditions, a lot of the conversations centered on deer accessing their garden plots. And then also mugwort being the major invasive. There was even talk around how if the lawn mowers from the park district are coming down through the gardens and they happen to clip a piece of mugwort, they said, in their opinion, mugwort can grow from any cutting. And so that's, could possibly even spread it too. So they had talked about asking the park district maybe to consider bagged lawn mowers in, in this setting. So that was some of their major concerns that they wanted to share as well. So next we wanted to touch on making sure they were appropriate. If they were asking for more services, which they were, were they willing to pay for them? Et cetera. So the majority felt the program was affordable for their household. But many also felt the startup costs for organic gardening were a barrier for new gardeners. Whether you had to buy the fencing, any kind of amendments you were doing to the soil yourself, et cetera. Some of them talked about scholarship programs being important, especially in the Victory Park region for some of the apartment complexes that are in the area to encourage people to think about participating in the program. But a lot of them said they were willing to pay a bit more for amenities, whether it's the manure, the organic material amendments, fence rentals and installation services, staff oversight and increased communications. The conversation swirled around these topics, but in general, they all were pretty amenable to that, a, a possible price increase.
Judy, what's the, what's the cost per, per plot?
Chelsea, correct me, but I believe it's $50 for a 17 by 30 plot, which is the standard size. Is that right, Chelsea? She's paging through the program guide.
It has an increase from last year, that's correct.
Yeah, we haven't increased the fee in over, I don't know, 10 plus years, probably.
Uh, yes, so it's $20 for the raised beds for resident, 30 for a half plot and 50 for a whole plot. And then the $30 per garden or per plot for the deposit. And return gardeners in good standing get that half price following years.
And that budget is designed to cover costs, which is primarily the supervisor and any supplies that we have to buy for like, for example, the wheelbarrows.
Are the, are the wheelbarrows the only thing that are supplied?
There would be hoses. Sometimes there's some equipment that we have to buy for the garden supervisor. She carry, that person has a toolkit with them to be able to fix hoses and the like. But it does not cover the cost of water. It did at one point, but it doesn't any longer. Doesn't cover any of the mowing or operations staff or any of Chelsea or my staff's time as well.
So what is the responsibility of the, the garden, the garden supervisor?
Chelsea, do you want to answer that?
Yes, supervisor, they also have a garden that, at Meadowbrook. One weekday and at least one day of the weekend to try to catch the gardeners. And so they patrol the gardens just to make sure, be present there if anyone has any questions. And they also monitor the weeds, the additions over each plot, so they keep track of whom to give weed notices or weed warnings to. And so they visit and their, their office hours or garden hours are posted on the kiosk for when they will absolutely be there, but they also garden there, so they tend to show up at, at, at other times too. But their main priority is to just manage and keep track of the gardeners. Mostly of how their weeds are doing and making sure they're staying in line there. And then also to inform them of any programs we have or any information, such as if the Illinois Marathon will be there when the water is going to be turned on, keep them informed that way. And also creating our newsletter. We have a newsletter that we send out, so they are responsible for putting together that newsletter to send out.
Is it a paper or email newsletter?
It is email.
There are some gardeners that don't have email and we'll go ahead and mail those, print off and mail those to them. But typically, the garden supervisor, Chelsea, correct me if I'm wrong, works about 10 hours a week at Meadowbrook and a few hours a week at Victory during April through September. And a little less than that as we cut up to the growing season and a little less than that after, after September. Just partly because that's the growing season. And we've always required that the garden supervisor garden at the park as well. So they know what the gardeners are going, what kind of challenges the gardeners are facing.
A number of them also said they received phone calls from park district staff related to like, when they need to be out of their garden and when they regi, when they should register. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, that is something that I started doing when I had taken over this position. 2019, 18, sorry. And, and so I find gardeners, so if you ask them if they plan on gardening the next year and they let us know, then yes, no, or maybe. And so I would call the yeses and the maybes after our registration had begun and made sure that they, if they would like to be registered to ensure they got the plot that they would like.
Clean out all those weeds and then get a different one.
Well, that was going to be my next question is if, so if there's a gardener that does not want to garden the next year in that plot, let's just say there's weeds, there's, you know, all sorts of debris or whatever in the plot, then is the, the next gardener that assumes that plot, are they responsible for cleaning all that out? Or is that the park district?
So that's on the park district. And then in that case, we would retain their deposit, their $30 deposit, and that would help cover the cost of our operating staff going in and removing that fencing or getting that non-plant or large plant material out of there. And so we would take care of that. And so the garden would be ready for the next year gardener. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Judy, did I see you had something else to share?
One, um, one unique thing that we do that the other garden programs around the community don't is we disc the soil at the end of the season, as opposed to doing it at the beginning of the season. And that allows gardeners to get into their plot for those returning gardeners as soon as they register and have gotten a confirmation that they're registered. So if we have an early spring, they can actually start their garden, even though the program doesn't start until the first weekend of March, they can actually start that earlier if they, if they've registered in time to do that. And that, that leaves, as you know, we oftentimes have a very wet spring. If we waited until the weather cooperated with us, they may not get into their garden until May, if even then. And so that's an advantage to them. It does require them to turn their soil or prepare their soil in the spring, and they can do that. We, we get people that will put, ask us to put a poster up, up, about rototilling or people will work together to get rototilling done. But we don't do any spring turning of the soil for them.
All right. So next we wanted to learn from the participants, what is some of the best ways that the Urbana Park District staff could communicate with them? And in general, they were kind of all over the board of what was their preferred method to communicate. But one thing that stuck out as a difference between Victory Park and Meadowbrook Park was Victory Park Organic Gardens had been considered to be a neighborhood park and as they, or a, a neighborhood garden program. And as they started to think about what could be the reasons why maybe the program itself was not as successful as it could be in their minds, was that they felt they needed more marketing and they needed that garden to be marketed as a community asset now instead of neighborhood asset. Now, when the park was redesigned and the community of the neighborhood around there came up with these conversations or participated in these conversations, they had said they wanted a neighborhood organic garden program. And they readily admitted that that was the case. So there might be a slight shift there in thinking of how who that garden should be available to in their minds in, in that neighborhood. But otherwise, they had a long list of one person would say, I don't do email, I don't do internet, just, just give me a phone call. And then another person, typically younger adults, would say, I want to receive a text message. But overall, in general, the sentiment was if we have an, an invested invisible staff person, they will know us and know how to communicate with us properly. I don't know if that's necessarily the case, if that's kind of asking for, for a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. But that was kind of what their general sentiment was related to communication. Both sites were interested in having some kind of an upgraded kiosk onsite that would be able to share some of the postings that Judy and Chelsea have been talking about as well. So as I think about priorities, I kind of broke them out between the two gardens. Victory Park, I would say, their first priority that everyone talked about was they want to replace the two raised bed gardens that had been removed in the past. So currently they only have four and they wanted to have, see that number increase back to six. They also were very concerned and interested in having the soil amended and turned in the raised beds.
Oh, that's what rotate means, okay.
Yes, sorry. They talked about increased communication through onsite postings. They mentioned they want, were interested in reclassifying from neighborhood garden to community garden. Expanded marketing and promotion of the organic gardening program in general. Like I mentioned, they're all serious leisure users of organic gardening and that's one of their first priorities and sentiments. They also all talked about the continued use of grossback drive as being an accessible roadway and parking area for the organic gardeners. They all use it, they all see it as a real asset for the gardens at that site. As far as Meadowbrook goes, they said the, the growing conditions were the things that they talked about the most. Seeing the soil be, be amended with organic material and having compost and manure available. There was one point where one of the focus groups, all the people that were sitting there were cheering, bring back the manure, bring back the manure. So they see that as real central to their, their concerns there. Excuse me. They're interested in the park district working towards some kind of invasive species and wildlife management plan particularly related to the deer and the mugwort. They talked about mitigating the drainage issues and compaction in some areas. There was definite mention of, you know, a survey of real site-specific plots is important because we have general issues that are of concern, but each plot might have, might have their own one. The tool equipment rental storage system was on the front of their minds. Standardized fencing with help to put it up if needed was important to them. And a number of them talked about revising the user guide. And I would say, what was amazing was the individuals that came to the table would say, I'm so-and-so, this is where I live, I've been gardening for this many years. And individuals that said they had gardened less than three years said, the user guide is amazing. It was a huge help for me in launching organic gardening. Individuals that had participated for a long time were very critical of the user guide and that some of the practices weren't up to date, et cetera. So the longtime users were definitely interested in thinking through how to revise the user guide. And we're also willing to participate in doing that according to what they were saying. Lastly, a number of the individuals talked about, you know, there's, it's such a melting pot at the gardens and people grow so many different varieties of vegetables. And I walk through the gardens and I see different things and I'm like, wow, what is that? What does that taste like? And they got real joy out of people sharing with them. So I know that the park district has tried this in the past and I think it just relates to the fact that they spend all their time gardening. But a number of them just circled around a seed sharing vegetable or fruit sharing program that they thought would be helpful for them to learn more about different methods, different seeds and different things that were available.
I, I have a question for Derek. Is there a, is there a, are we working on the mugwort as an invasive species at this point? Or is that, is that something that we're not involved in?
Yes, we, for a number of years, we've been working on it outside the gardens. We think it's an escapee from the gardens and it's been invading Hickman Wildflower Walk and even Wondell. What we started working towards this year, and it'll be reflected a little bit in the action plan, were some outreach efforts to educate folks on how to handle mugwort. And we're we've got a video that we recorded where Matt Balk is talking about the biology of the plant and how to remove it. And we are wanting more closer with the garden supervisor to make sure that, that, that species in particular is getting removed before it propagates further.
Derek, do you think it's correct that just a little bit of it will, will sprout and grow?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's somewhat garlic mustard in that regard. You know, what's, what's interesting about the, the mowing is that we've looked closely in areas that we mow and it's not present there. So, um, through regular ongoing mechanical removal, you, you deplete the reserves of carbohydrates and the plant gives up. So it's really finding its place, uh, in the edges of the gardens where fence lines are uh, and in between plots. And those are areas we want to target moving forward.
Yep, yep.
I will ask you about deer. Who, we've talked about that a lot.
The Learman Avenue Garden, is that the, is that the residence in Learman Avenue? Well, it's no longer really a complex, I guess, but who maintains that garden?
That, that is the L-NAC group. Um, Elsie, who is a board member for L-NAC now, is working with them on that. Um, but it is truly run just by the neighborhood.
And so have they seen any issues, I mean, with their, their gardening areas or plots?
Not that they've, uh, relayed to us. I mean, there's obviously issue right now whether they're gonna, what they're gonna do as far as opening the gardens or not based on what we're in with the COVID nineteen. But no, they have not relayed any information about having issues with their soil.
LaShonda, that's a relatively new garden. That's only about five years old. And, and I think that the age of, of Meadowbrook is the main problem. I don't, I, I think that they could, if this, if the, if the Learman Garden continued and on in for forty years, they would be having some of the same issues that we're having, but because it wasn't, it wasn't, it hasn't been gardened.
I would agree, I would agree with you Nancy. It is, is a fairly fertile soil still.
Yep, yep.
All right. So we come to the point where I, I sum up, um, what I heard in the sessions and general sentiment, I feel like was it's pleasurable to work in a garden. It's extremely satisfying to eat what you have grown organically. One point I would, I think I would leave you with was your gardeners, your organic gardeners love organic gardening. And they want to see the park district and the community love it as much as they do. Now, I'm not sure how feasible that is or how possible that really is, but that's the mindset that you're dealing with and that they have. So it's making them feel like you, you see that being as important for them as well. So that's the thought that I want to leave you with. And I know it's been a lot to take in. These, these gardeners came early. They stayed late. Um, I recorded them for an hour and a half, but I probably could have had maybe two and a half hours for each session of information that I received from them. Um, very invested, very talkative. So happy to answer any questions before we move on to the park district with their, uh, action plan, park district staff. Um, otherwise, if you have other questions later too, that, that spring up throughout the week or the coming weeks, um, you all know how to get, or at least do through the park district staff. So I'm happy to engage with you now or anytime. So thank you so much for, uh, dealing with technology and, um, for your attentiveness and questions.
Jared, I do have a question. Um, do you think that it's possible if, if one of the, if, if some member of this gardening group started, um, something like WUNA, like the WUNA list? If you, if you think there would, enough of them would be interested in participating? Because what I see, what I'm hearing is that at this point, there needs to be a lot of information transferred in that group and a lot of, of, and I think it sounds to me like they're open for sharing and they need to share. Um, you know, seeds, information, fencing, tools, all that kind of thing. Um, and if they were working on that themselves, does that, do you, did, do you have any sense of, from the folks you talked to? Whether they would find that interesting or do you think there, it's too many mavericks out there and it, that's not a reasonable, um, thing to consider?
I think, I think we're open to exploring options, uh, and I'm gonna ask Chelsea to confirm this, but I, I think there's a Slack group already. Uh, maybe Judy knows as well, which is similar to the, the WUNA listserv. Um, so I, I think there may already be a mechanism for them to, to work together. I think a lot of our long-term gardeners, um, may not be as, you know, up on Slack though. So, uh, maybe it's a good opportunity to survey gardeners and talk to them about would they prefer more of a traditional listserv email format than, um, Slack? Chelsea, is that right? Is there a Slack group going?
Yes, so this is our second summer with the Slack group. Um, and so that is something that they indicate on their gardener information form if they would like to join. And, um, they are, it's, they join through email, but once they're on that email, they're just on that, um, Slack platform. And there they're able to start threads of conversations on fencing or seed swapping or tilling. And they're able to, uh, kind of centralize those conversations. Um, there, I looked and there's between the two, last year and this year, there is about, uh, thirty-eight, forty gardeners that are on that. Um, there's not as much noise. It's, it's a little busier at certain times right at the beginning. And then there at the end where people are looking to see if someone wants to take their fence as opposed to them taking it home and things. Uh, but, uh, you are correct and it's more of a, um, a younger crowd that utilizes, uh, that.
And is it moderated in any way by park district staff or is this, uh, a volunteer of, of the gardeners themselves?
Yes, so the garden supervisor monitors and posts as well. Uh, or like, uh, said, inform them about, um, or if an event is happening in that area and parking will be affected. So the garden supervisor monitors it and I have a account as well. Um, it's on my desktop. I usually like to keep it open, uh, just throughout my workday so we can see if anyone posts in it.
Yeah, one out of my eighteen people used the Slack program.
But your average age was fifty-eight.
Exactly.
Right. I don't even use Slack. And I feel like
I don't even know what it is. I mean, except in the
Judy wants to say something.
Prior to Slack, um, the gar, the garden supervisor did take questions or, or comments or whatever from the gardeners and would broadcast that out to gardeners, um, through an e-newsletter. Uh, um, usually that was once or twice a season, depending on the timing of what the, the question may have been. Um, and when we had the old bulletin board, um, up, uh, that was along the south side of the parking lot, gardeners were invited to post, um, what their needs might be. Um, as far as if, um, you know, they had fencing, they wanted to donate. We, um, at one point did allow gardeners to swap fencing, but we found that what ended up, we would take a dumpster worth of, of fencing material and plant mater, or, um, tools and things that were left and it just was too cost prohibitive for us to continue doing that. Some of the old timers will remember there was a chicken coop that was, um, between the house and the parking lot. And they were allowed to, at their own risk, store stuff there for the winter. And when that was taken down, um, the garden shed, which is where the pavilion is now, um, the garden pavilion, they were allowed to do the same there. And when that pavilion or that, again, we had problems with people never coming to collect their things. And the park district was stuck taking truckloads of material away. So when that, um, when that pole barn was taken down, we, uh, that service was taken away. And that was quite a while ago. That was back in nineteen ninety-four. Um, so we have not provided any place for storage since, you know, since nineteen ninety-four.
Judy, you're, you're mentioning a fence reminds me, and I'm not sure if Jared covered it in, in his topic, but there was some discussion of the idea of a perimeter fence with the focus groups. And, um, I was actually surprised to hear that in general, folks weren't in favor of a perimeter fence around the gardens. Is that right, Jared?
That is correct. They, they referenced the fact that they didn't want to feel like they were in armed camp when they were gardening.
And that's quite a bit of a change.
Own armed camp.
For, because, um, for quite a few years, we had a lot of gardeners who continually asked for it. And when we responded in the garden manual with information about what that would look like and cost and how many gardens may have to be taken out of production to put it in. Um, they began to realize that it wasn't, you know, there were a lot of questions of what happens if the gate doors open, left open and a deer gets inside and can't get out. Um, they, they, um, are changed how they looked at it. Um, instead are, as, as Jared said, are more concerned about people knowing what kind of fencing to put up. Um, and again, my general feeling is that's part of the gardening experience because people do different ways. And depending on where you are in the garden, depends on how successful that guard, that fence will be. Um, so trial error is pretty normal part of, of a gardening experience. I mean, I have dogs that I have to keep out of my garden, um, that steal my produce. So, you know, that's just part of the, the experience.
Have we given any thought to let it lying fallow for a year and kind of working it over? Trying to get rid of, you know, using that time to maybe solarize it to see if we can get rid of some of the mugwort, doing, you know, more than one disking and, and, and really putting in some, um, amending it with a lot of organic material, compost, that kind of thing.
I wouldn't say we, we've, we've thought about that precisely. Um, I think we've thought about beds that are not being used for various reasons, you know, retiring and, and working on, on those uh, more intensively, especially from the mugwort perspective. Um, I, what, what we've done is we've introduced, uh, organic material this year, uh, in the form of compost from LRC. We've been, we've made it more easy for the gardeners to access. And Chelsea will talk about this, um, you know, in her report. Um, so we're encouraging gardens to use that to build up the soil profile. And that's gonna be from the soil testing we did, a large part of what will bring success to the gardens.
Yeah.
Um, we did bring back manure along with the soil test results. And, um, we felt like if people were educated about what their soil is and they wanted to still use manure, that was, uh, you know, a, a decision they could make. What we've heard from our, our soil testing group is that the manure probably gives you a bump of nitrogen, uh, which is why anecdotally we've seen, uh, a response and a flush from those gardeners that still brought cement in recent years.
Sure.
Um, but ultimately, you know, the, the, it's the, the compost, uh, year in and year out that will help, we think with soil, soil fertility overall. So that, that's the approach we're taking right now. I think we're open to other approaches down the road, but we think that this, this should probably do it.
Nancy, one thing too to consider, uh, we've staff have talked about too is, you know, we'd want to get all the membership support about that. I think the idea of missing a garden season, maybe if I understood you, sounded like, you know, take a timeout, try to get things under control.
Yeah, yeah, that is what I, or do half and half. I mean, I, I
Right.
Yeah.
I think that sometimes if you present people with, uh, a, maybe a starker choice.
Right.
That they will begin to look at it a bit, a bit differently. If, if it's, if, if, you know, they, they look at it and say, oh, this has gotten so far out of hand that these are the sorts of things we have to do. Maybe they, maybe they will, um, they will look at it a bit differently. And I, I don't know. It was just, it was one thought because I know that certainly an idea to, um, to take care of what's there.
Think, um, we, staff also talked about that, you know, the idea of could we go in and, you know, chemically or physically do something to get rid of that? I think it's sort of, how do you do that? Obviously chemicals wouldn't be, you know, a, a wise approach.
Right.
But maybe something we want to stare, you know, hold on to as a step approach. You know, if we couldn't improve it the way that staff's recommending now, that may be something we want to save, you know, as a opportunity. Eric, get everyone to buy in. That, I guess, might want to get everybody to get on board with that. And if, you know, if that's how we could do it, that'd be great. But I think we'd like to try at least this, these couple approaches in the action plan, see if that gets us anywhere.
Yep.
That'd be a good segue into the plan.
Right.
Chelsea, you want to take it away and Judy and I can help fill in if there's questions?
Sorry, I was muted, so I was talking and no one could hear me.
Sure.
All right. So I'm gonna go back to sharing the screen here again. All right. Can everyone see, uh, the PowerPoint? Okay?
Yes.
You hear me? Awesome. All right. Well, um, my name is Chelsea Proll. I'm the Environmental Education Coordinator at the, uh, Urbana Park District over at the Anita Purvis Nature Center. And I, uh, am in charge of the organic gardens, both Victory and, uh, Meadowbrook Park. So, um, this action was developed, or this action plan was developed by Urbana Park District staff using the findings from, um, Jared's Campfire Concept Focus Group Report. Uh, the action plan targets the topics of concerns and is broken down by, um, projects that we've completed and then ongoing or in-progress projects as well. So regarding communication, um, some things that we have, uh, done have been updated, that garden guide or that garden manual. Um, and we sent it out to everyone. We also posted it on our website. So it is easy to access, to check out, even if you are, um, not a gardener, you can see the most up-to-date information. Uh, and we were going to mail that to our participants that prefer being mailed to, but they actually showed up to one of our programs. So they were able to get an updated hard copy of that version there. Um, and so we updated all the garden manual information thoroughly, including maps, um, what to do in case of theft and the find your garden plot section of the manual, um, among other things. So, uh, we also have created a fillable PDF form to send to returning gardeners to ensure we have the most up-to-date contact information. Uh, this is something that we are able to just email out, uh, and they're, uh, can fill it out right through the email and send it right back. Um, this is the first year we've had a fillable form, uh, to send via email. And I had a great response from, uh, returning gardeners sending that back with updated information. Uh, that way we would know we had their most up-to-date address, phone number and email address and the way they would like to be contacted. So this was especially great for the returning gardeners. Some ongoing, uh, or in-progress measures we've taken is to update the kiosk periodically with, um, a map, some program guide information or program information and gardening tips. This is the kiosk that is currently up at Meadowbrook right now. And so you can see it has some information about the gardens in general, uh, and how to rent them. And the first QR code on the top there, if you were to scan it with your phone, would take you to the registration information, a little more about the garden. It would take you to our community garden page with that registration. Uh, the little bulletin board there is where we can post any, uh, upcoming programs or any, uh, news that is going on. Um, that right there shows our scoop on soil program and the managing mugwort program that we had coming up. Uh, and then below it, you can see the map there, which is, can be removed and replaced as it gets updated throughout, uh, the growing season. That way an individual can check to see where their plot is or, uh, where their daydream plots are, et cetera. Um, and then any other kind of, uh, important information, uh, there's a place in the lower right corner there. You can see we have our stop the spread mug, mugwort poster, which I'll cover a little more further down. So that is our kiosk at Meadowbrook and how it is set up. Um, and just updating that periodically, uh, is one of our goals. And that's something the garden supervisor and myself will be doing. Uh, we're looking to increase the MailChimp e-newsletter from, uh, to a monthly distribution during the garden season. Uh, before it would be a monthly for about the busy seasons, uh, June, July, uh, and things, things like that. But now we're looking to expand to that monthly, um, to the entire garden season. Uh, and that's just to, to stay informed or to keep gardeners informed, um, and to stay in touch with them periodically. We're also updating the signage at Victory Park, uh, to provide, um, a little more information as well about the parks as well as, uh, make more of a cohesive design with the rest of our, uh, park signs that we have. And then lastly, we're looking at the possibility of using EPAC for gardeners in twenty twenty-one. Uh, EPAC is something that we have, uh, that works with our active soft registration software. And we are using it for the first time this camp season. Um, it was a way to go paperless, uh, for our camper information forms as well as, uh, another form of communication to our camp parents, um, specifically via text. to our camp parents, um specifically via text. They can send mass texts similar to our uh rain outline, but this way we can target uh individuals and groups a lot easier. Um and so we're looking at the possibility of that EPAC for gardeners in 2021. And then, of course, it's not on here. Uh forgot to mention our Slack that we discussed earlier, which is an ongoing uh discussion board for gardeners to utilize and another way for us to get information about programs or uh any important news to the gardeners. All right. So concerning the the garden plots, um you know, specifically a lot of the soil structure, soil integrity, uh some things that we have done are provided.
Chelsea?
You only have part of your screen.
Yeah.
There we go.
There you go.
Well, sort of.
No.
No.
Well.
There we go.
That's the one.
Almost.
It's still only a portion of it?
Yeah.
Was that your next slide?
There it is. Yeah, got it now.
Okay, thank you for letting me know. So regarding the garden plots, things that we have completed is provided soil testing through Agricultural Soil Management. And we provided garden amendments, uh manure and compost to restore that regent material in the soil. We informed garden about the plot condition, a scoop on soil program where Alec Bean uh from Agricultural Soil Management, who did the testing, came in and spoke about his finding. Uh and we are currently working together, uh him and I, to create a report, a copy report to send out to all the gardeners, ones who weren't able to make it to the Scoop on Soil program. Another thing we did was replace all the beds at Victory Park. And I am gonna show, I want to show off a picture here.
Ooh, they look good.
Yeah, because what Google had looked terrible, so I'm so glad to see these. The Google Earth view was awful.
Here you go, here is one photo.
Nice.
Oh, beautiful.
Oh, wow.
And since uh started putting this in, we have got nothing but happy garden reports. So they are uh very excited. And just even people in the neighborhood that aren't gardeners, it's sparking more attention and bringing more attention to the gardens. There's another shot of them.
Are they fully rented?
Yes, I am happy to report that uh ten plots are rented at um Victory Park right now. So all of the raised beds uh are rented. And then also uh the half plot beds, you can see back here, that whole row of beds is rented as well. So we have ten plots that are rented with from six different gardeners.
And does that mean Victory Garden is full or there are still plots available?
So we have not utilized, so this is one section of plots here. And there's another section um to the west of those plots that has not been tilled up for use because of uh we haven't had that many users there. So if we did have other individuals that were interested in gardening, um we would have to look into getting that uh those areas ready. Okay.
Hey, Chelsea?
Yes.
The the uh Scoop on Soil program uh seemed like the attendance at there was pretty good. Do you recall the numbers or?
I believe it's eighteen gardeners.
How many?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, good.
Both from Meadow Brook uh and Victory. And um the they were very excited to be there. It was definitely um a very positive response to that program, I would say. All right, so moving forward, um uh another thing that we had completed was coordinated a volunteer workday for gardeners to utilize to help prepare their garden. Uh this was actually scheduled for last Saturday, April fourth, from ten AM to two, and we had to cancel it. But this was going to be with the help of a U of I group called VIP Environmental. And so we were going to get uh two sets of ten volunteers for two hours at a time. So four hours of volunteers for them to be able to come in uh and help the gardeners in any way that they would be able to. So I encourage gardeners to show up during that time with ideas of how to utilize uh some extra help. Before doing this, I called around to a few gardeners, asked if this is something they'd be interested in. And anytime I would call, talk to a gardener for another reason, I would discuss with them, um would you utilize this service? And everyone was very, seemed to be very excited about it. And so even though it got canceled now, it's definitely something that I will be coordinating in.
Yeah, Chelsea, uh um I was thinking that um something else that you might have along this line was collect some names and numbers and, you know, um information on people who would be available to uh rototill the garden. Because I think that's often um, it well, it's a huge undertaking. I mean, I've gardened out there and it's it's a it's a huge undertaking to have. So to have someone come out and rototill it up for you ahead of time would, I would think, in a lot of ways, make it easier. You wouldn't have to invest so much in a lot of tools because the the, you know, the main spade shovel, heavy, hard work is al- is already done. And I have found over the years that the hardest thing about getting somebody to rototill the garden is to find somebody. So if we had that information prepared for people, just a a list of, well, here's some folks who do who do rototilling. And, you know, you could, anyway, that was a pot.
No, I appreciate that. I think that's something we should definitely uh share, whether it's through, you know, multiple platforms, Slack, etc.
Yeah, I think multiple platforms is a good idea.
I had sparked my Alexa to start playing music in my background, so I have to holler at her to shut off real quick. And I'll be right back. I'm not sure how that happened.
There is um there with the manual, there is also a supplemental that provides resources um that we, as it becomes available to us, on where they can get um uh information about testing their soil or um, as you said, people who might till. Those services oftentimes change from year to year, but um we try to update those as best we can.
Right, right. Yeah, and I would think particularly, I was thinking that um if, and I think that this really fits in with with that general idea is to have, I was thinking like an old, you know, you have an old-fashioned barn raising. You have a you have a Saturday or a Sunday or a Saturday and Sunday where you have the fence raising. And people who want to put their fences up can come and get help, get advice. Um and the whole, then the whole guy or as much of the garden community as wants to can start working together.
I think that was partly, that was what um having the volunteers come and help with was one of the the um goals that Chelsea was looking for.
It it seems like, um, I mean, I used to be the organic garden supervisor for one year, one summer. But just in general, I mean, why is the Lyman Avenue Garden successful? Partially, yes, it's the soil and it's newer, but it's about the community in the that is there. I mean, I feel like more than anything, this is about what you're talking about, Nancy, is helping them find community in this space.
Absolutely.
So they rely on each other and it becomes something people want to be a part of.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, and I don't want to uh downgrade your your comment, Meredith, but I I do know that uh Elnac, I mean, there's like one or two people and that's what keeps it going.
Right, so they're the they're the champions, right?
That's correct.
Everything else, you have you have two or three people that run the PTA. You have two or three people that run the Soccer Parents Program. You have two or three people who are organizing all the sales at the basketball games and then.
Right, I mean, the whole neighborhood enjoys it, but there's like one or two people that are really driving it.
You bet. So we just have to find that person.
Right.
So that's something I saw as well. I did a research on some area, other community gardens, uh the ones that are also in Champaign-Urbana, the Randolph Community Garden, the ones over at Parkland, Lyman, as well as other park district gardens um that might be similar to ours. And I did a call and asked their people who manage those gardens, uh different questions about any problems they had. For how they go about their communication. So but a lot of those I community wasn't hard mitigating some of those issues like weed. For example, the woman, Dawn Blackman, I believe her name is, that manages uh Randolph, that they don't have any weed issues because they, I mean, the community fluffing them and also the unique way. When I talked about mugwort, she said we have likes to turn it into, I believe they said flower, something around those lines. And so they just, they harp even all weeds as a community. And so I did notice that uh a lot of the success gardens were, you know, based around uh that community aspect or um that set of gardens that are forward that help it out. So that's a good thing to point out as well.
Yep.
So moving forward, uh we discussed the um evaluating the garden plots a little bit. Uh we're looking at maybe the ones that last three years or or other uses. Um and then looking at perhaps taking them out of, and we're looking at other way to utilize those plots. Derek touched base a little bit more on that. And then also, we touched base on draining a little bit. Discussed that providing landscape recycling center compost, so the gardeners can build up that soil profile uh is going to improve the drainage, uh but also the park district will continue to evaluate what more we can do to assist. Moving forward, weeds, wildlife, and some pest control. Uh some things that we have done is updated the weed policy to be more manageable, um as well as clear and concise. Uh our weed policy before allowed up to twenty-one days before we personally could take action. And that was just allowing more aggressive species such as the mugwort to be able to do a little too much at a time. So we uh we did the weed policy to bring it to fourteen days. And so that gardener has one week after they receive that first initial weed warning. They have seven days uh from that weed warning to fix the issue. If they have not fixed it by then, they get another uh warning, which is their second warning, uh seven days to fix that. And by that fourteenth day, if it has not been, uh communication has not been had or if it has not been taken care of, then it their plot for including the its contents and the deposits to the Urbana Park District. Uh some ongoing things that, again, Derek discussed a little bit of working with the U of I and Wildlife Management in the area. You know, half the or part of that park at Meadow Brook is uh managed the natural area. And then um also to mention the uh landscape that are adjacent of the park is very much a deer habitat. Uh and so that does uh involve a lot of deer being at Meadow Brook. Um and so really trying to find that balance between the different uses at the park and uh the uses surrounding the park is going to be um a challenge there. But we also want to provide relevant outreach to gardeners about persistent weed. We did our managing, we were trying to do a managing mugwort program that was scheduled for March twenty eighth. That got canceled. That was going to be led by uh Matt Balk, our Natural Areas Coordinator. Uh but we also created some signage. Here, you can see this is uh our flyer that we sent digitally to all the gardeners. And we also put it up at the garden kiosks. And um and so it, in this flyer, you can see that it describes mugwort, shows a photo of it, describes how to identify it, uh discusses a recommended um hand pulling, and then uh discusses how it spreads. That little QR code in the corner is a link to a video. And I'm going to go ahead and Katie, if you can, uh can we try to play the?
My name is Matt Balk. I'm with the Urbana Park District. Um I'm going to talk to you about um identifying mugwort, one of our invasive species that we're finding in the organic gardens. A really easy way to identify the mugwort is going to be this very kind of silvery white underside of the leaves. The leaves will have uh fairly long lobes on them, um which will help them kind of stand out versus some of our other weedy species. Um and they'll also have this very kind of dark purple stem. Um that's another really good characteristic as far as trying to identify the the mugwort. So with the mugwort, um it works really well to um hand pull out, um by pulling all of them kind of throughout the year. We can deplete the rhizome um that they're sprouting out of of energy um and hopefully be able to to knock it back. Another option is using kind of black plastic bags um to pretty much prevent the the mugwort from um being able to photosynthesize. So the easy way to pull it um is just kind of going as low as possible. As you get kind of close to the the ground, um you can just kind of pull and you'll get um not necessarily all of the roots out. But this is enough to at least knock it back. All of this energy from the plant isn't going to be able to go back into its root system, which will minimize the amount of new re-sprouts that we'll have.
But Chelsea, do you think there, do you think that they need to be told that there's a a particular way to dispose of all that pulled stuff? Are we concerned that it's going to sprout back from what they've pulled?
Uh that's a very good question. I think.
I it it doesn't look like that's actually how it, it's from roots and rhizomes. So I think they're
That's what I'm thinking.
I mean, I'm looking it up on University of Maryland's what extension website. And it's, yeah, if you're if you're tilling it, then you're a disaster because.
Yeah, you're cutting the rhizomes up and each one of them is.
Right. So have we, I mean, I was going to suggest this earlier or later. So have we ever thought of just smothering it using blast, black plastic on plots that are empty through the summer and or put plot, um cover crops that are useful, right? That could be tilled back in, again, on plots that are not going to be used, that we're not just inviting weed. I don't know, I mean, there's plenty of weed seed bed here, a fox tail for eons. Sometimes you probably really need to steam sterilize, and that's way too expensive. So I don't know what, what if you guys have discussed any of those things?
Yeah, I I think for plots that don't get used, if we have mugwort growing rampant on it, we would want to do something to solarize it and kill it that way. All that said, it does seem like in those areas that we mow repeatedly, we are seeing it go not establish. It just doesn't have, doesn't develop, uh doesn't photosynthesize enough to establish. So that may also be a reasonable alternative.
Right, right, I I agree. I I think that that rhizomes are the problem and and not the, you know, hoeing it up isn't going to help. But pulling is the, yeah.
I think if we if we manage a good program, we're cooperating with the gardens for two or three years, we'll eradicate it.
Yeah, you and I gardened out there, mint was the big problem. Is that gone now?
It's, I don't, I don't think it's gone, but it has not, it's not as much of a problem as it used to be.
Okay, so this too shall pass. Ah, okay, yeah, this is.
All right, and so.
Chelsea, your screen is not fully um loaded.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so for tools and storage, um uh we have been looking into providing some storage for tools on site. Some options we've discussed is maybe a storage chest uh to keep there or racks on our existing concrete bins to hold our um larger tools instead of hand tools. And also working with the Urbana Free Library to make a a little library for tools. And if you don't know what a little library is, there's a book right there uh that shows um a little library. And so it would be that same concept, but with uh different hand tools uh that people could use. And not just hand tools, but maybe uh books on or seeds, uh area for seed swapping as well. So this is a kind of city, um a little, little library, I don't know what else we call it there. And so we have been working with the Urbana Free Library on both that and uh part of the seed swapping program as well. As for staff oversight, we discussed a little bit on communication, but other aspects of staff oversight is uh that we have finished is conveying staff roles and expectations in the manual and just making sure that those are clearly outlined. So expectations are are clear in that sense. Uh and then ongoing, we're looking to provide that garden supervisor with some sort of, some sort of uniform to stand out a little more. Perhaps a a shirt or a hat, something that makes uh them pop or maybe something on their uh sign at their garden that states that they're the garden supervisor.
About something out on the kiosk, like a little, like a little flag or something so that you know that he or she can put it up, put up their little flag, and then you can see their flag flying on the kiosk. And then you know they're there. And then if they've got a hat, a recognizable hat or shirt, then then they're easier to find. But at least you know they're there and you're not just kind of wandering around looking for somebody. And you're not just wandering around looking for somebody with a distinctive hat or shirt.
I love that idea.
We also encourage the garden supervisor to come at unscheduled times to check the gardens just specifically in case there's a gardener that's doing a practice that is not part of our guidelines and catching them in the act kind of thing. Cause if they know when the gardener supervisor is there, they're going to obviously avoid that person. And it's been effective in the past, but they, they are out there at other unscheduled times as well.
And then other just stuff that we had discussed a little bit earlier on staff oversight is they've been making it a priority to touch base with gardeners. Personally, especially those who indicate that they would rather have a mail or phone call as opposed to email. Making sure that they get messages about any upcoming programs or other opportunities, such as our volunteer opportunity. We have heard a lot of comments back from gardeners already regarding communication this year. So I do want to add that in there. Other than that, I, that is the, oh wait, no, I do have one more. Sorry.
Chelsea, again, it's not loaded all the way.
Okay.
There you go.
I don't know why that helps, but doing that seems to help. A couple more things for tilling. As Judy said, we disked in the fall. And for some reasons that she had mentioned earlier about people wanting to maybe garden a little bit earlier and things like that. And the weather in the spring, we do not do that in the spring. But we are going to, you know, look into if weather permits, providing that service in the spring as well as the fall. And then also providing resources in the kiosk, shared resources about tilling, whether that be some phone numbers of services they call or discussing with them a, a date where there will be a service there during that time and allowing them to come there. As for supporting new gardeners, what we have completed is again updating that meeting. We're updating the content of our garden manual as well as updating the content. Our new gardeners must attend a garden meeting. This is an hour long meeting and it is mandatory for new gardeners. And that is when they get a overview of the program. We thumb through the garden manual. And that's also when they do their plot selection. I only was able to have one garden meeting before the remainder of them got canceled due to their current COVID situation. So I have since then created a orientation packet that can be sent or mailed as well. And so now we are able to do that. Even though I do like the meeting in person and that is preferred, we are able to be flexible during this time and have these new gardeners. They'll get all that information to them in sort of an orientation fashion. Other ways that we look to, or we have provided programs, our scoop on soil like we discussed, and then our managing mugwort in which was canceled to support our new gardeners. Ongoing effort is looking to link gardeners as mentors with new gardeners who need a little extra support. This way, take those gardeners that Jared was speaking about that want to share their expertise or want to more help others than go to a program themselves. This is more of a mentor program for them. And so I have spoke with a few gardeners who said they have been interested as well as some new gardeners that would be as interested. So we're looking to combine those two forces. So to provide a little extra support for that, that especially the start of beginning the organic gardening can be a little overwhelming. So that is something we're continuing or looking to do. And then.
Go ahead. One of the things I did ask Chelsea to do to consider as we get ready to plan for fall and next spring is to look through past garden programs that we have offered and that were successful. Or even if they weren't and offer some of those again, we, we have offered seed sorting or sharing. And we have done seed starting workshops in the past, but historically we have either low attendance or no attendance. And so those programs, after you offer them for three or four years, you're kind of, kind of wonder what, what the issue is. So we're going to relook at those and see whether or not some of those might be supported in the future.
And one other thing I would like to add is in the upcoming summer, in July, we are offering a open house for the gardeners. And we are just encouraging gardeners at that time to just be present at their garden. And we're also promoting it to the public for them. If they want to come by, ask any questions that we will have staff and current gardeners available. So it's a nice garden open house where it hopefully builds that community aspect up a little bit. And so we'll be doing one of those in July. I don't have the exact date on me, but it is in our program guide that will be going to friends. Or that has gone to friends. Um, the last thing is accessibility. So we are looking, and we're going to work with our park planner, Cara Duda. Accessibility of those parks and of the gardens, I mean. And then the park district will continue to discuss the status of gross box drive with the city and communicate that it's a very useful service access for both staff and gardeners. Now that is the end of what I had. Does anyone have any questions?
Can you tell me what your general thinking is about tool storage? Cause I know when I gardened out there, that was one of the real annoyances was always having to, I mean, I, I had, I had the tools, but just schlepping them back and forth and back and forth was, was really a nuisance. What have other, when you, you talk to other garden groups, what did they do? Did they do nothing? Did they, what did they do?
A lot of them had a storage onsite and some were even increasing their storage a little bit, especially the Randolph Gardens. I know had mentioned they were looking to get another, almost across the board, all the way, they said no electric, anything that would just walk away.
Oh, yeah.
But anything, they would start either gather donations or buy, purchase a small set of tools to start with. And they would keep them in a shed onsite there. The Learman Gardens, they have a select few that have a key for it and they just kind of keep their eyes peeled outside and come let people into that if they see people gardening outside. The shed, provide a key to the shed to their gardeners, but there they were mentioning that people lose the key and.
Oh, yeah.
The one I saw the most, seemed to be the most successful was the individuals who had a storage shed with a code access that they change yearly with new gardeners.
Oh, that's a good idea.
And that was something they also use the inside of the shed door to put a lot of information to and something.
Yeah.
What need to know information. But some, it varied with storage. Some of them were just small chests and others even bigger shed types. But storage, common theme when I did my research of something that other gardeners would like to see.
We also talked about purchasing some standard garden equipment, having it available to gardeners. And if, and see if they walk or don't walk and go from there as well. For some of the perennial gardeners, they actually leave their tools in their garden, which is a risky situation. We've had people who've, I remember years ago, we had a gardener who stuck their stuff in the back of some bushes that were in the park. And we're surprised when somebody walked off with them. It is a challenge.
Take the handles of these very obnoxious bright orange or hot.
Yeah.
Paint might be a real deterrent.
Exactly.
But I like the idea, even a small shed with a, with a keypad would be terrific because then you don't have to worry about losing the key. And then it's on the person to remember it.
In their email and they have their phone and they can look at it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I guess the, 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 the storage that we haven't really addressed that is a question is people also asked about places to put their fencing at the end of the year and.
Oh, yeah.
And that's a lot of fencing.
Oh, yeah.
So that would be, that would be something a little more challenging to be able to sort that out and identify who's this who's and what happens if somebody doesn't come back and the like. So that's something we're still discussing.
Right. I think, but you know, at least if we start with, if we start with tools, that's a, that's a step in the right direction. And then we can, we can see how those work. We can learn, we can learn from that and then move on. Because you know, fencing, I mean, I'm taking down fencing now and just, it's a pain in the butt to store it. And we've got lots of space to store stuff like that. So I understand that it's not, it, it's not an easily soluble problem.
I was just going to say, I really appreciate that you all took the time and we worked with Jared to go through this. We had several visits in pub, you know, from the public, from gardeners to our board meetings. And I mean, it's also a very polarizing subject, right? We, as we see, and I think it will always, in some ways always has been. Nancy, I think your comments about it's Urbana, those are all spot on. But I, I really also think that it's about maybe reinvigorating a community somehow. But I think all of these ideas seem like, you know, for lack of a better term, low hanging fruit.
Well, right, right.
That, that will hopefully help the gardeners. I mean, it's terrible to think that constituents thought we were going to cancel a program by inviting them to engage in dialogue, when in fact that's not what we were interested in doing at all. So I hope this, I appreciate the effort the district has put forward with this.
Yeah, I think, I think what we would want is to empower them to do the type of gardening that makes them successful without taking responsibility for their gardening. And that's, that's the tricky part about it. I will take ownership of the fact that we had a couple of years where we had staff leave and both in either full time or part time and some communication issues. And we dropped the ball in keeping the, the gardeners abreast of what was going on. But on the same note, I know that at least one of the people who came to talk to you guys saw me on a daily basis and never said a word to me, which was disappointing that they didn't feel that was something that they could do. So I, you know, just trying to keep our, our communication lines open. And I think I want to give Chelsea a shout out simply because providing a fillable form, those gardeners in the past would get that in the mail, but they would not necessarily send it back to us. And this, this can allow us to know that we have up to date information. Cause we did find out that a couple of gardeners were not getting emails or that one of them was getting the email, but not opening it. And so they, their function was that, that we weren't communicating with them, when in fact we were, but they just weren't reading the emails. So having that information on a yearly basis, one lets them know that we want to communicate with them and that they should be looking for something.
And then the only other question I have, which Corky, you alluded to with the Learman Avenue group, afraid maybe they can't open their gardens because of the stay at home orders. How is that impacting our gardens or not?
So while right now we're allowing, because our program is open and we have plots that are social distancing linked away. We, we are more or less promoting our gardens now. Tommy, who runs all the gardens in the Learman neighborhood, was asking our opinion. And basically I was asking him to look at, how can he rearrange his lots in a way that will promote social distancing? If you've been out there, it's pretty much just one big garden. At the same time, I was being very careful to say, Tommy, I'm not telling you to open your gardens or not open your gardens. Just be mindful of the fact that social distancing is what we need to be doing.
Yep.
I do want to add that we have had four inquiries about the gardens since this has happened. I think parking individuals to want to grow their own food and know that, you know, now more never that it's important to know how to do that. The uncertainty of what's going on. So we have had people inquire and even I think we've worked on registering five plots.
Something we do and will promote more this year as well is that when we get to the middle of May and there are gardens still available is, is letting the gardeners who currently have gardens know that those are available and offering it to them as a half price. We have always offered that, but I don't think we've been as successful in sharing that with our gardeners. And so that allows a gardener who maybe took on a half a plot, who maybe may want to take on more or has a friend that wants to join them, it does allow them to be able to do that if they want. And we hope that would help us cut down on the gardens that are not being used.
Or you could offer plastic bags to those who took a full lot and think they can find, they can always. It sounds so good when you start.
I know.
I was one of those gardeners as well.
Congratulations, Chelsea. You did a good job on this. It's really, it's, it's, it's a good start. And I think if we keep our eye a little closer on it, we will end up with it back and as, as good as we had it.
Thanks to staff and campfire concepts. Great job for, you know, taking a 50 year program. Taking it, looking at every, look at all of our history, all the things we've done. It's been very focused on the gardener. I think also what we found is the people at Victory Park started, you know, a completely different approach. But we've been able to tailor both of these programs back to the neighbor's interest.
Yep.
Just one point I would like to, to raise, the focus groups involved a fairly small number of people versus the total number of participants. And I think it's going to be really important to keep the lines of communication open with a broader spectrum of the users to make this really work well.
Judy, do you have a sense of the total number of gardeners?
Chelsea, do you remember what the end of the year looked like? You gotta undo yourself. You're, yeah, there you go.
I want to say we had about 40, at Meadowbrook, about 40 to 45 garden plots or gardeners. And about, I want to say near 60 garden plots rented, if I remember that correctly.
And the numbers vary depending on how many are half plots and how many are full plots. And then there is a section of the gardens that was the propagation plot or the prairie for a while that we have taken totally out of commission because it was nothing. But the seed bank in there is so much prairie that it, that the people were not having success gardening on there.
Been there, done that. Okay. So we had 18 out of, we'll say 40, 45. That's not, that's not too bad considering. And if we've got new gardeners coming in and people moving back to Nepal.
Yeah, I just looked at the numbers of who we sent out participation requests to. We had 68 individuals between both sites.
Okay. But I think Michael's right. The communication is the key to it all.
So anything more on that topic? Are we ready to move on to discussion item B?
I'm ready to move. Anybody else?
Okay. Well, thanks again for the excellent presentation and interaction. So now on to a different sort of challenge.
Well, I just wanted to remind folks, it's getting later a little bit in the hour. I don't know how much more time folks have, but certainly we wanted to give staff and the board a chance to just do some updates on our current situation with COVID. How much time do folks have to kind of give us parameter?
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
Not an hour.
Want to point out, obviously we're working with the Zoom format. I think the meeting slowed down. Staff have noticed, you know, we can use two hour discussions because it takes a little time in the case, getting the points back and forth, but we'll try to keep moving. I just wanted to provide a little bit of update and then have each of our key staff add a few points that kind of shakes out. We're all working with. Just a little reminder, we started back the week of March 9th through the 13th, when we really started getting some serious messaging about, you know, the crisis. By Friday 13th, we had already planned our shot. Since then, obviously the governor has extended that filter in place April 30th. So that's in closing all the park districts. So that's in closing all the park district facilities, canceling all the programs, creating a shelter in place, trying to work with all full-time staff, any of the remaining part-time staff, you know, getting us, helping us through this crisis. We're obviously working with all of our local, state, federal agencies, local agencies right here in town, working very closely with the school district, the library, champagne district, the Forest Reserve, and our other area-wide park groups to try to have a consistent cohesive message. Each group's a little bit different. They're approaching things a little bit specifically based on what their needs are, but a lot of communication, a lot of good ideas, sharing one problem from one group to another. The info has been very much in flux, getting new information daily. Good examples are, the first couple of weeks, we were allowing people to use basketball courts and tennis courts. The idea was to get people outside, get them walking, playing, good for their physical and mental health. And now courts, tennis courts are closed, mostly due to crowding of people probably working and, or playing in groups that are too large. So again, we expect things that could likely change. We want to stay on top of that. As you know, the governor included the playground closures in, in his decree. So that's been a little challenge, I know, for both park districts, keeping kids and families. In my opinion, what I saw at first, it wasn't little children, but it was those older kids or what we often call free-range kids, kids that are old enough to go around the parks on their own. Or even older kids, maybe college kids, that just might not be, you know, listening or paying attention. We're really shifting to safe use of the parks and our trail networks. Obviously, we have some concerns of crowding, crowded parking lots, but we're trying to message. We have some new signs. We'll do some updates in a little bit with you. Obviously, some of our natural areas with more narrow trails make a little bit of challenge, but we have some exciting ideas for the boardwalk at Buzy Woods we want to share with you. Staff's doing a great job of keeping all the staff working that need to. Obviously, we've had quite an impact for any part-time staff or people that work intermittently, trying to find ways to communicate to get them signed up for unemployment, you know, so that they can have some resource coming in. Obviously, staffing and who's available, we're, we're still doing that with staff assessments. We're focusing on essential work and we continue to define that as work. But what are the things that we have done that really protect our assets that we can also do safely and not endanger other staff or public? Things that we're really concerned about coming up. Obviously, we don't know how long any of this goes, so the general schedule and how it affects upcoming events, facilities, programs that kick off like camps, outdoor pools, things like that are really, really a challenge. But we're also concerned about grant schedules, looking at bidding projects. How is the Crystal Lake Park project going to come in on bids? We know that the new bond funds are scheduled to be spent in three years. So obviously, the more time we're in this kind of in-between period, we can't work as actively and as fast as we'd like to. So we're trying to get some more information about that. Attracting and maintaining donor interest is really a challenge. I think we were ready to approach a few people with the health and wellness opportunity to, to maybe be ground floor donors on that. We're kind of stalled out on that. That, that's a little bit tough. And I think those are things that are kind of hard to do over Zoom or over the telephone, unless you really, really know somebody very, very well. Upcoming events are a concern. Obviously, our normal schedule with neighborhood nights and Jetty Road Day start in May and early or in that June window. So it's not just knowing if we're going to have the event or not, but it's also all the preliminary work, all the planning that goes into that aspect. We have sponsors or donors for programs or events, trying to make sure we can follow through and, and take care of that.
Tim?
Yes.
I was just gonna let you know, the University of Illinois and Extension canceled all of their camps.
Okay, and we're tracking that. You know, what, something I should have said, you know, staff have our own thoughts, but what we're trying to do is not get ahead of the public or get ahead of the board. And so, you know, we're trying to kind of walk through this carefully. And that's one of the questions really trying to get to is how aggressive should we be? And what, you know, where should we be at? I talked with Celeste Goke, the director at the library. They've canceled everything basically out to Mather. And they are not really confident that they'll be back in the library, you know, after that. Of course, none of us know and, and we just wait daily on that. But that's an example of some of our groups are a little further out. And as we know, other major events, sporting events around the country have already canceled. Another factor that.
I was just gonna, yeah, Meredith, we are well aware of the U of I. Their July tenth is where they're at right now. So we're, we're tracking that. It's just, we're trying to figure out at what point. I, I guess, sorry, Tim, I just wanted to say that, you know, like for daycares and things like that, there's these essential providers or essential workers. And, you know, do we have a camp that's based on providing some care at a lower level than what we normally do? So all that stuff that we're analyzing at the moment.
Continuing on, you know, obviously being able to assess, attract higher onboard train staff, anybody that's need certifications like lifeguards, things like that. That's kind of all in the flux and we're doing all of this while we're physically distancing. So it's, you know, challenging. Most staff like to interview their staff in person. They'll try to, try to create workarounds for as many of those things. Obviously, we're working day-to-day with a lot of restrictions, but nonetheless, we continue to keep everyone engaged. Finance is a real concern, you know, what is revenue, what's our income going to look like? So I thought with that, I transitioned and gave Katie and then Corky and Derek a chance to maybe highlight some of the areas ongoing discussions or have any concerns. I'll mute.
Okay, I'm in the middle of working on wrapping up the FY20 budget and projecting the FY21 budget. So all of that's in flux at the moment. Right now, my plan for next week is to still present to you the budget that staff began preparing in November, but we know right now that that's going to change. So we're just going to keep working on it and hopefully I'll have a draft to you next week. And then from there, we'll try to narrow in on what kind of changes are going to need to be made before the budget's finalized in July. With that said, there was two other financial impacts that I just wanted to briefly address. And like Tim said, we don't really know a lot about any of this right now. And we're still learning as every day and that goes by is new information. But there's two things that I'm working on. Next week, I'm going to be working on filing a FEMA claim to be a part of the national claim for the emergency. And that should open up some funds to us to help pay for some direct costs, like extra signage that we've had to create to protect the public. And also potentially it'll help offset overtime costs that we've had to invest for additional cleaning or other things related to the emergency. So I'm still learning more about that. You know, I've shared some information with staff, but I do plan on moving forward with filing that claim next week. And then the other thing that, that's all new to us and that we're all trying to wade through was that attachment that I put into the board packet about the Department of Labor, the new act. It's called the FF CRA, the Federal Family COVID Response Act. And it opens up two new leave banks for all employees through the end of the calendar year. Depending on the scenario, there's six different scenarios. It can provide up to two weeks of a hundred percent pay or it can provide up to two-thirds pay for up to 12 weeks, depending on the scenario that you qualify for. And that's in addition to any other leave that you accrue with your organization. And it also extends to part-timers as well. So we're looking at, yeah, so we're looking at some real financial impacts. And the other real downside to this particular act is that private employers are able to offset the cost with reductions in their payroll taxes, but that same stipulation wasn't made for government entities. So really, it's just unfunded mandate for us that we're going to have to accept as part of the law. And like I said, we're still learning more about that. The only information that's been released at this point by the Department of Labor is that flyer. And so they're, they're still working on their guidance and things like that to release to entities. But it was supposed to be implemented as of April first, but they were also instituting a thirty-day non-enforcement period beginning the day the law was passed, which was like March eighteenth or something. So we really have until about mid-April to, to get this figured out and underway. So that'll be a project for next week also to kind of figure out how we're moving forward. But in the interim, as we're doing this kind of district-directed closure, it's not as big of a deal just because everybody's already on leave at this point that needs to be. But moving forward, especially if we get into a scenario where we're partially open or things like that, we, we just need to figure out how what we're doing now fits with that new law and how to move forward. So like I said, we really don't know yet, but we're finding out more every day.
Do you know if with part-timers, if they're receiving unemployment benefits, does this affect, this no leave affect them receiving those benefits or no?
Good, good question. So we basically notified all of our part-time staff that they would be laid off as of March thirty-first if, if they, if we didn't have any further hours for them. And this new law didn't start till April first. So it's kind of two different things. So if they're currently an employee as of April first and still working for us, then they'll be eligible for those benefits. But if they've already filed for unemployment and they've terminated their employment temporarily with us, then no. But if we rehire them back, then yes, they'll be eligible again.
Got you. Thank you.
Well, don't matter to me. I'll, I'll go real quick and then lead things towards you, okay? Because you've been doing a lot of stuff in the parks. So one of the, one of the major things obviously for us is trying to, you know, like we talked about earlier, decide, you know, try and figure out, is there going to be anything anytime soon that we can offer? You know, we talked about, well, okay, April thirty-first. Then, you know, maybe the governor's stay-at-homes release, but then what's that mean? Does it still mean we've got the social distancing and we've got to restructure how we program things for numbers of people that can gather? We're obviously thinking about the aquatics facilities, especially the outdoor pool. Derek could probably chime in a little bit on this, but, you know, if Joseph and the other aquatics maintenance staff can get to work, it's about an eight-week process. So we're thinking about, okay, so there's that, but there's also the fact that we haven't been able to hire and train guard staff, which, you know, typically, we're, we're hiring people in January to start getting prepared for the summer. We need about a hundred and twenty people to be able to run the outdoor and the indoor facilities. So we're very concerned about the outdoor pool. We've been talking about options.
Corky, it's an eight-week run-up. It's an eight-week preparatory run-up to opening the pool.
That's on, on the operations side, Nancy is.
Right.
Ask Joseph, he said six, seven weeks with the full staff and, and good weather. But, you know, you got to factor in some bad weather and it's hard to depend on staff when health is a question right now. We, we don't know, you know, would people be able to continue to come to work?
Okay, I just wasn't sure that I was understanding what that eight-week week was. Thanks.
So I like to tease my staff and say that occasionally about once a month, I have a really good idea. And so I had a really good idea the other day. And not, not saying I'm making a judgment on the outdoor pool yet, because I'm not. But, you know, can we get creative in our thinking and maybe find a way that our indoor pool becomes an outdoor indoor pool? So can we take some chase lounges around outside? Let people be able to be outside in the sun if they want and tan, but yet be able to come into the pool. These are all things that we're thinking about. We're trying to be creative. You know, there's going to be, I've got the aquatic staff right now looking at budgets. What happens if we open the pool July first? What happens if we don't open the pool? Obviously, from a financial standpoint, would be better if we didn't open the outdoor pool. If you can't open it when we open it, July one is a, will take a pretty good financial impact. I'm thinking it's probably going to cost outside of our tax dollars at least sixty to seventy grand to open that pool above and beyond what we pay in the eighty thousand that we already commit to the outdoor pool. Versus if we don't open, we'll probably be able to save about twenty thousand of that tax support. So, you know, it's not all about financial, but it's about if we get the pool open, are people going to come? You know, we've had a lot, we've had a lot of discussions with the admin team, you know, I'm, I've got a nine-year-old daughter and I'm like, well, my daycare may open, but that doesn't mean I'm sending her to my daycare. So, you know, those are all things that we're thinking about. Camps right now, we are, we are still trying to do some phone interviews, thinking that we're, we're basically going on the, the knowledge that, well, maybe we will open the camps come May, at the end of May, begin of June. Probably knowing that we're going to have to do some kind of adjustment based on how many kids can be at one facility and those kinds of things. But we're hiring or we've got a lot of returning employees, which is good. But we also don't want to be stuck out there with, okay, everything's great. Everybody can go back to doing what they're doing and then we're not prepared. So still at this point, we are hiring some staff for, for camps. Or at least lining them up in case camps do start. We've been doing a lot of things, trying to see how we can. You've probably seen someone on Facebook with Elsie and Ashley doing some programs on, online. We've tried to do that with the Nature Center with some programs. Ed's been posting at least one about swimming, swim team and stuff you can do while you're not, not at the pool to keep in shape for swimming. So we're trying to be creative in those ways. We, we are continuing to think about what the near future is going to be. We've done some discussions on our media. So when we're talking about our summer guides getting ready to come out, which was already in the process, but we've kind of put a halt on our fall guide. Again, trying to not utilize resources that we don't need to use right now and probably thinking we're going to use some kind of what you can do at the park district versus listing all these programs that we don't know are going to happen. Again, we have no crystal ball. We're just trying to do the best we can and make sure we're thinking of as many things as we can. I can tell you that Irvana is coming to town on Friday, so that's good. We've been working with Dean's Graphics. We'll take some pictures. Once we get the van, we'll send that over to them. They'll get the graphics in place. And we'll be able to get that moving forward. I know Elsie has ordered a bunch of equipment that was in this year. The money was in this year's budget from Carl to stock the, the van. So we are moving forward with that. Again, we don't know how soon we'll be able to get it out based on what's happening in, in the world today. But other than that, we've been doing a lot of refunds. My, my guess, I, I know I talked.
I think we're going to be up to about fifty thousand dollars of refunds since March fifteenth through April thirtieth.
Yeah, so we got about fifty grand in refunds. Good news is, and, you know, we had a discussion this morning, Katie and Tim and I. And, you know, for this year's budget, I think we're in pretty good shape. The, the key is next year. And we're going to be giving some parameters for staff to redo their budgets based on, you know, no, no programs in the summer. You know, twenty-five percent fall programs, maybe fifty percent in winter. And then moving further along, hopefully, and get to full participation. But we're going to be doing some budget projections going forward based on assumptions of, you know, we're not going to be at full speed for a while. So until we get to, back to that position, we really are just kind of making projections and doing the best we can, but. But we are taking all those things into account and we'll, we'll get through it. Along with that, and I'll, this will lead into Derek, because Derek's been doing a lot of this legwork. But Mark, the marketing department's been working with Derek a lot on announcements and notifications. And Derek's done a great job of going out and monitoring the parks and those kinds of things. So I'll let him talk about what he's seen in our parks and how we've kind of taken the stair step approach to closing things.
So Tim mentioned a number of the closures, you know, we've been progressive about it. We've been working with public health and looking for guides from them. We actually heard from public health before the state closed playgrounds that that was recommended for us. So we were already moving in that direction. You know, and even with the playgrounds, how we closed them has been progressive. We started with, with just signs and we saw pretty quickly that that wasn't enough at Prairie Play. And so there we put some barricades around the periphery with some caution tape. We stopped short of running caution tape all around and through the playgrounds. We were concerned from a safety perspective, consulted with Keith Ewer, our playground safety inspector on that. And he was concerned about that as well. But by just doing the periphery, we seemed to have controlled that access. And then watching other playgrounds where we put up barricades and signage. And it appears that that alone is doing it right now. You'd have a complaint from the neighbor at King Park that she saw kids playing on it. I've been out almost daily to, to watch and it seems like that behavior has, has, has gone away. So I think pretty much all of our playgrounds at this point, we're seeing folks following the guidelines. With basketball, we, we did the initial step of signage and zip ties. Heard that at victories and the zip ties had gotten cut. So today we put up plywood on top of the, the actual rim. If that doesn't work, we'll consider removing rims. But we're just, we, we're taking a progressive approach, trying not to have staff come in when they don't need to and do a whole lot of work. We're being very careful about what we consider to be essential as far as staff response. Up until now, that staff response has been mostly removing trash in the parks. Every other day we've had staff come in and work on that, also doing facility inspections. But as we begin to enter the growing season, we're beginning to re, kind of anticipate bringing in more staff to do essential work. Mowing is something that's going to begin tomorrow. We've got staff coming in initially, they'll be prepping mowers and picking up sticks in the parks. And then we'll be out mowing, but it won't be our, our full mowing crew as typical. We, we won't have part-time seasonal staff that usually supplement our crew. We're actually going to reassign some of our other ground staff to help out with the mowing crew. And we'll have crews of two and three alternating every other day and taking one day off. So it'll be four days of mowing on any given week to staff. Staff report twice to do mowing and we'll evaluate and see if that's enough for us. We can add that fifth day if we need to and have staff report to work more frequently if we need to. But we're, we're being very careful. To that end, Keith Ewer's our construction supervisor and also our co-chair of our safety committee has developed a return to work procedure for staff to limit exposure. We're thinking about how we do time sheets in new ways. We're really encouraging staff not to use the break room to lunch in the parks or in their vehicles. We're making sure there's not more than one staff person in a vehicle. And for those few vehicles that require communal use, like the garbage truck, we're making sure we're sanitizing it afterwards. We set up, set up cleaning stations throughout current in the vehicle warehouse to make sure we're getting those areas sanitized. We'll also be doing, be doing more custodial work as more staff report to work. And so at current at the cottage, we're bringing custodial staff to start doing some deep sanitation. We've worked with ESS to alter their cleaning protocol at Phillips, the nature center in Brookins. They're going to be focusing more on, on deep sanitizing. And they've communicated that as we prepare to reopen facilities, whenever that might be, they're doing research on how best to sanitize those facilities. And we'll be working with them, not only there, but elsewhere. Somewhere at the, at the aquatic center, I've been meeting with some specialty contractors on cleaning to prepare for sanitizing those facilities. They're starting doing more inspections, lighting inspections and playground inspections, even though playgrounds aren't getting used. We need to make sure they're safe in the off chance somebody decides to, to use them. With natural areas, we're going to be focusing really on just critical invasive species removal as those species begin to bloom. So that they don't go to seed and, and we lose several years there. But we're not going to be worrying about invasive woodies. We are still doing our goose management protocol. We've been consulting with wild goose chasers who developed our egg and nest, egg and nest management protocol on how best to do that to limit social, to maintain social distancing. And we've been following the recommendations and also talking with DNR and the Department of Agriculture about our charity harvest. At this point, we're planning on moving forward with soliciting public input and bringing it to the board. What we're planning on doing is later in April, having a Zoom meeting with area agency staff that are doing egg management or other goose management to review what we've been doing. We'll have a list of all the different years of management, things we've done. And then we'll talk to them about our interest in implementing this charity harvest and the reasons why we're considering it now. Largely the lake management program or the, the lake rehab program. I will also have Department of Agriculture staff and Department of Natural Resources staff join us to talk about what's being done statewide on goose management. Following that, we'll take those same materials and put them on our public website and begin to advertise and draw traffic to that as a portal for folks to come on and learn more about what we're proposing. And we'll have a survey monkey tool where folks can give comment. That's a requirement of both those agencies, agriculture and DNR. And what they've asked us to do is A, advertise that widely and B, try to get participants to give us information about whether they live in Urbana, whether they live in Champaign County, whether outside the area. There's a, a chance that we'll have a lot of folks from outside the area want to weigh in. And they want to be able to interpret their comments differently than, than residents. So we anticipate that we'll be moving forward with that and, and we'll bring that to you all at the May board meeting. There's still a question whether the Department of Agriculture will be able to do a charity harvest. They're really focusing their work on more critical wildlife conflict issues at airports and things like that. They, they also have social distancing requirements and guidelines they're working under. So it may not be something we can do this year. The, the season is late June, so we'll move forward and be prepared. Tim mentioned the CLP bid. We, we moved that back until next week. And we issued our final addendum earlier this week. The feedback we've gotten is that our bidders are still interested. In fact, it seems like we picked up some new interest in bidders that weren't interested before because other projects have closed or have been pushed back. So we're hopeful we'll still get good bids. In fact, I'm talking with Boran Russo about some other projects. They conveyed that they, they think that the bidding climate may be becoming more competitive, maybe not right now, but, but in the future. So because of all the work we've done getting this lake project ready, we're going to move forward. We, we did push back some of the substantial completion dates to allow bidders to have more time to do the project. We think all the seeding needs to be done by October of this year and the perennial plants put in by spring of next. So working, you mentioned all the signage and, and work we're doing there. You know, addition to monitoring the parks, we've been putting out more signage and we're working with our marketing staff on some new signs, using some infographics that have been developed by NRPA. Also some models that the districts have been using that are kind of really focused in a direct and friendly way about visiting the park, but also respecting social distancing, trying to make sure folks are not coming to the park if they're sick, not touching high touch areas, those sorts of things. And hopefully we'll get those out later this week. We've heard from folks that, that are concerned about our really intensely used parks. And so that's going to be part of our marketing message as well, is that if you arrive at a park and you see a full parking lot, maybe go to a lesser used park. The trails, once you get on them, can, can be pretty full. What I've seen here at Meadowbrook is most folks, I'd say maybe 90% are, are really being respectful and are getting off the path, walk around each other. There's a few folks that are still blazing through, but it seems like most, most folks are getting it. At UC Woods, we had someone to reach out and they're concerned that once they get on the boardwalk, if a group's approaching them, they're not sure where to go. So we're looking right now at not only some signs about the distancing and then staying home if you're sick and those sorts of things, but also trying to look at how we might make a one-way loop system there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're, we're working on that right now. Aquatics, at this point, you know, it's really just facility checks. But we wanted to take your all's temperature on, on what a delayed opening might look like. We, there is work we could be doing right now at the outdoor aquatic center. We haven't started it. We've been really trying to limit our return to work to those really essential activities. But we think that things like preparing the outdoor pool, power washing, painting the pools could be something that we can begin to introduce. Obviously with every decision, when you make that decision, you're introducing a new potential for spread. You're exposing staff that it may not need to be exposed to more contamination. So we don't take these decisions lightly and it's something that we're, we're really exploring at this point as opposed to saying we think we need to do it. But I, I, I think if we want to have any shot at opening the outdoor aquatic center this summer, we should probably consider doing some of those tasks and really working closely with staff to make sure they're practicing those distancing guidelines.
Just a quick question about that. Can, can the pool stay in the condition that it is now through the summer? I mean, do you really need to fill it in the summer weather?
No.
No.
The some, the summer's not, the winter's what's, the winter's what's hard on it.
And do we have appropriate personal protective equipment for staff?
We, so the, the guidelines that we've been, and then the, the new stuff from CDC about the, the face masks are something we're, we're looking at right now. What the CDC has said is that they recommend face masks if you can't maintain social distancing of six feet or more. And they give an example of going to a grocery store or a pharmacy. When, when we have staff that need to work close, we're going to have them wear face masks and we, we do have some on hand. But for, at this point, you know, if you're out mowing, we're not going to require it. We, we also want to be sensitive that there's a shortage of medical, you know, masks available. We are looking at what other agencies are doing right now with that. You know, wearing a bandana appears, appears to provide some protection both for yourself and for others. And so that, that may be where we end up moving. But where we have staff that are going to be working close together, that have to work close together, we, we will provide masks. For example, tomorrow, our two lead mowers will be working on their mowers. And they'll probably be, you know, relatively close together at times. And so they're going to be asked to wear a mask while they're doing that.
I, I do want to be, I do want the board to know that there are many districts as of this time, thinking that they will open their facilities later in the summer. So it's not a clear cut decision. Cause I mean, what I'm hearing is a lot of people are saying they'll open in July. Now, that was two weeks ago and now things are in stay home mode till the end of April. So I haven't heard a whole lot more. I do know Scholom is still in the impression that they are going to try and open in July. So that, that, you know, that plays a role in what we do. But I do want you guys to be clear that people are thinking that they may open later. But I also want us to consider it is if time goes by and we get farther along, that we be creative about how we use our indoor pool, which we could staff a lot easier. I mean, it's going to be very difficult to find 120 people to come start working just like that.
I would add too, the indoor pool could reopen quicker than Crystal Lake would take to get ready and start up.
Without a doubt.
I think the, the other thing I want to relate to all is an area that we're scrutinizing right now is our, our response to our landscape beds. You know, the green industry in Illinois has worked with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity to get an interpretation from the state that landscaping is considered essential. But within that, you know, there's all sorts of questions to ask and, and the interest of being really protective of our, our staff and slowing the spread. We're, we're thinking about what, what really is more essential. And so in some of our perennial beds where we've invested a lot in plant material, I've done a lot of recent rehabs. We think that having some maintenance of those to limit weeds taking over. Can this will happen to be a real problem in a lot of our landscape beds is, is, is a, is something that's reasonably considered essential. Talking with Georgina, she feels that we could weed whack a lot of that material. She's reluctant to, to go in with herbicide because that could have non-target damage to our, our beds we want to maintain. The plants we want to maintain, but she thinks with weed whacking and some limited mulching, we can have a, we can keep up with it. It won't look the same as, as in years past. It'll, it'll be a different looking bed, but, but we're able to, to maintain it. And if this all gets better in the not too distant future, you know, we can, can reinvest our, our efforts there. She does have a seasonal person, she actually has two. One that's, she thinks would be more critical to bring on in terms of their knowledge of our program and beds that we're considering bringing on. In general, we're not looking to bring on a whole lot of seasonal staff. But in a specialty area like that where somebody already knows where to go, what to do, how to take care of the beds. It's a real advantage to the park district to be able to bring them on, particularly if, if, if Georgina were to fall, fall ill. So there's a few exceptions we're making in terms of how we're thinking about seasonal staff. The annual beds are an area that, that I, I, I think we'll probably do what we can not invest time and money in. That said, we ordered a lot of annual plant material in October. And you may have seen that Champagne Park District is planning a big sale of all their annuals. They have over a hundred thousand dollars invested in those plants and they're not planning on putting them out. They're going to be focusing more on their Flower Island program where they have private entities investing in that program. And they're going to take a, approach similar to us, really just trying to keep up with a few high priority areas. We have a lot less than that. Not committed to annuals right now. It's in the range of three to $4,000. And we're checking with our vendors to see if any of that is material that they could resell for us. Perhaps we cover some of that cost. We have some annual beds that we think may actually be considered essential and priority. And you know, it's, we still play an important role in community beautification. The, the bed that we tend to think about most seriously is, is the Blair Park bed. It's a very high profile corner, but there's others as well. The sensory garden, the lake house are places that if we can't unload the plants at a reasonable price or maybe we're not committed to them at all, you know, we, we may pull back on this as well. But a lot of our annual beds, we think we won't plant this year and we'll, we'll just herbicide to keep the weeds down until we come back and take care of them.
Mulch them up.
Yeah.
How's the park grant? Do we have any sense of whether that's going to be funded, whether?
Haven't heard anything. You know, it's a, we know that the museum grant got pushed back and so we're still working on a museum grant application. In fact, we met with our staff team and ratio on a, on a call, conference call today. But the park grant, we haven't heard anything. It's, we know they did a lot of work upfront before this to, to get ready for, for grant awards and had made a lot of progress. But it's hard to know what the state's thinking right now about that program.
Okay.
On the plus, it would employ a lot of people.
Yep.
Yeah.
The other thing, talking about the health and wellness facility, just real quick is that Tim and I were actually supposed to meet with Erin Rogers from OSF today. And I rescheduled that until we got back in the office. So she was very understanding and said, we'll see you when you get back in the office. So.
I thought you were talking about Green Bay.
Sorry Nancy, go ahead. I was just going to add, we also checked with our legislators to see if they had any updates. Heard back from Carol Amage that she would have her office keep checking or keep tabs at least with DNR to see what, what they know.
Good.
Derek, anything else? That's a lot with everybody.
I mean, I just, I would underscore that, you know, we're, we're taking, looking for direction and guideline from public health and obviously the state. But we're also working closely with our other agencies that we try to all have a, a similar response. So it's not, well, you know, Champagne Park District did this and Urbana is doing that. One area of particular focus is obviously the dog park and, and we, we share dog park memberships. We had reached out to public health earlier about the dog park. And at the time they were comfortable with us posting CDC guidelines at the dog park and making sure folks are aware of what those guidelines are. At this point, probably most everybody is. At this point, probably most everybody is, it's widely publicized. But it's, you know, we're continuing to watch areas like that. There's been a number of different listserves and email groups that we've been following, both through IPRA and through NRPA. NRPA did a broad survey of park districts in terms of who's got playgrounds open, who's got dog parks open, who's got public restrooms open. The vast majority of closed playgrounds. Of those that have dog parks, more dog parks are open than closed. And there were a lot of responses that just didn't have dog parks. Most restroom facilities are closed as well. And we plan on keeping our restrooms closed and our water fountains off until we get, until a lot of our facilities begin to reopen. We're keeping our portable restrooms out in our parks and we've worked with public health to review those. And the response we got was that so long as they are getting cleaned regularly and they have hand sanitizer, they're comfortable with them staying out. These, they really need to be serviced regularly though. And with the shortage of hand sanitizer, we're now inspecting those as part of our park inspections to make sure they still have hand sanitizer. At one point, our port-a-potty vendor reported he was running out of hand sanitizer, but he's found a new supply apparently. So we're good for the short term.
I might just add, the reason that this meeting was critical for us is because next week's meeting is really critical. It's the end of our fiscal year meeting where we have to do a lot of budget revisions. And so, you know, the guidance from the governor had said, you know, postpone any non-critical meetings. And we may have been able to postpone this meeting, but I think it was really critical that we test out this format before we have to do it next week. I mean, we just absolutely have to have our next week's meeting. So I really appreciate your patience. I think it went really smoothly. I, you know, I think being able to test it out with all of you and I think we had an overall positive experience. So I appreciate everybody's willingness to try something new. And next week, we've tried to keep our agenda to a minimum as much as we can and just bring forth the critical business items.
I guess I would just welcome any additional feedback or questions or concerns that the board has from things you've seen or heard in the community or various, you know, listserves.
Well, just from my own observations out and I hate even to point this out perhaps in some degree, but the goose situation, yeah, pretty miserably bad. I mean, that South Pass was getting to the point where I was wondering if it wasn't going to be a health hazard of its own. But between the entry to the, to the south parking lot on east to about where the, the fence down to the lake is, a few times, I've been walking at Crystal Lake Park frequently and it is just a minefield. I mean, it's just terrible. And that path is getting a lot of traffic. I don't know if it's possible to get out there with a snow brush kind of thing or something. But it is, I think, worth keeping a bit of an eye on. The population is, it's hard for me to say the goose population is down and the, and the path, both along that south edge and then as you cross over the bridge, the asphalt path is, that's also been pretty bad at times.
We'll talk with staff and see what we can do. You know, our dog management service usually starts as soon as the nesting season is over. And we're in the nesting season now. And part of that is because they've always been concerned that we might scare geese off and they might nest elsewhere in the park. But I think if we gave them a more focused patrol area, we may be able to curb behavior along those paths because they do see so much traffic. So I'll talk with wild goose chasers and our dog service and see if that's a possibility as well.
I just want to thank you all. I mean, obviously it's something that no one ever foresaw happening that's affecting everything. I mean, just everything. And so just trying to, you know, push through and follow guidelines at the same time. You know, I mean, usually we're in a, in a different situation this time of the year. So, but you know, I'm optimistic that, you know, there will be some sun on the other side. I mean, just, I feel it too, we're feeling it too at our place of employment. I'm having to go in every day. So, you know, a lot of our budget is, I mean, it's everywhere. And so, but you guys, you know, for what it's worth at this time, need to know that, you know, you guys are still doing a good job and the best of your ability, trying to make accommodations where you can. And, you know, just trying to be sustainable, you know, through it all. So, you know, I know, I mean, I can't, I mean, I'm sure everyone will agree that, you know, it's a tough moment. But UPD is strong, you know, you guys will be there and just take it day by day.
I'm really thankful that we've got really thoughtful.
I've watched it unfold since, since January. I've been watching the John Hopkins website and there's just no way to predict. So I think we just have to have a plan A, B, and C and be, be able to pivot and be agile as best as we can. We're not going to please everyone and I think we just have to do the best we can with the information that we have at the time.
Yep.
And for me, for the first two weeks, I felt like it was Groundhog Day. I mean, when I, when I was in the midst of it with bringing home students, it just felt like every day, everything we, all the decisions we made yesterday were irrelevant. And so it's a new day, now what are we doing? So, yeah.
Well, yeah, and I hope staff doesn't get discouraged by that because it's, it's a heck of a lot to deal with.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's no known end. I think that's the hardest thing to deal with. You can't see that this will be over by X. Everything is in flux every day and you guys are used to having such a firm grasp of where everything is going. It must be extraordinarily difficult. I think you're doing a fabulous job.
And I think some of the things I saw already, like Elsie was doing the aerobics piece online. I mean, I think that's what the community needs. So as we can also still be a resource virtually programming or whatever. I mean, people are, my sister is watching whatever zoo, whatever programming with her two small children at home. So if there are things that we can, can do to program in that virtual space, I think it's welcomed.
Couple of things. Oh, go ahead Roger.
I think it speaks well for you as a staff, but that's what I expected from you was to be on top of it and to find creative ways to deal with it. And I, I think as a board member, I, I want to say how I'm proud of, of what you've done as a staff. It's not going to be easy and it's not going to be done soon, but I think you're doing a great job.
Yep. I'll second that.
Just wanted to jump and mention too, we do have some, when Meredith mentioned online stuff, we've got some ideas for Arbor Day. So we can still maybe, maybe do some interesting things. We're also, I reached out and talked with United Way. I talked to Sue Gray about if there's any way to find out what the larger community needs are. For example, are there essential worker camps that are going to be critical this summer? You know, are there things like that that we can offer to do, even if it's not everything, but it might be impactful or helpful? So we're trying to get, they have, I think Thursday, they have a Facebook open discussion at 4:30. So hopefully we'll get some information back on, you know, maybe wider community concerns.
I guess I'll just mention that from the PNO staff I've talked with, they feel that they're being very well supported by the district and they understand that we're doing this in a very careful, cautious way. But also they understand how important parks recreation is to people right now and they're very supportive of our mission.
Well, just, just to add a little less hope. I just, I just got, I just got an email that the Freedom Celebration has been canceled for this year.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
So just so you know, we get these, these texts and emails all the time letting us know what other people are doing. We're just trying to make sure we don't make decisions too rapidly.
Yep.
Yep.
Right. Well, and you, it's good to see what other people are doing to inform your decisions. But those decisions are not necessarily the right thing for us.